Bernice, whenever you're ready. Well, good morning. Welcome to the May 21 Board of Supervisors meeting. I would like to call this meeting to order. Clerk, if you can do the roll call.
Supervisor Brandal?
Here.
Supervisor Mendez?
Here.
Supervisor Pacheco?
Here.
Supervisor Quintero?
Here.
Chairman Magsick?
And I'm here.
All present, thank you.
First on the agenda is the approval of the agenda, or actually the invocation and pledge of allegiance. I don't want to get too far ahead of myself. And the invocation and pledge of allegiance is going to be led by District Four. So Buddy, the floor is yours.
Okay. It's my pleasure to welcome Pastor Ricky Chambers, who is the lead pastor of the Kingsburg Community Church. Pastor Chambers fell in love with the Central Valley most of all the people, especially his wife, who grew up in Kingsburg. He is currently serving as the Kingsburg Ministerial Fellowship President, and it's an honor to give the invocation this morning. Welcome Pastor.
All right, let's pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you in this time, humbly lifting up our county to you. We ask for your leading in this place, for your grace and for your mercy to abound in and among us. Father, I lift up each supervisor here and their families and the districts that they represent. May you prosper them, protect them from evil, bring unity, and give them your peace that surpasses understanding. Thank you for appointing each of these men and choosing them to give oversight and guidance to our county. Give them your discernment and wisdom in all decisions made for the betterment of our communities. Give success to their resolutions and to their appointments. I pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give them an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved county. May Fresno County always be a place where the people here seek to serve rather than to be served, and where we seek to take personal responsibility for being a blessing to our neighbors. We thank you and praise you for the example Christ set for us in doing this, and we pray all of this in His name. Amen.
Let's continue with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one, approve agenda.
Board members, any items that need to be modified on the agenda, and if not, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Seeing none, it carries unanimously.
We now move to item number two. Approve consent agenda items numbers 18 through 59. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, item 40 is deleted. Item 40 is deleted.
Board members, any comments or any other items that you would like polled to be heard separately? I think there are some members of the public I know that have some items. Hearing none, I'm going to open it up to the public. Anyone wishing to comment on the consent agenda and/or poll an item that's on the consent agenda, please step forward at this time and let us know which item or which number you'd like polled.
We'd like to poll item number 56 from the consent agenda.
We will poll 56. Seeing no one else wishing to comment or poll items on the consent agenda, I will close the public portion, bring it back to the board for a motion.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. That carries unanimously. And Bernice, when will we hear item 56?
Item 56 will follow item five.
All right, very good.
We will now move to item number three. Board of Supervisors, presentation and retirement plaque to Grace Palomino, Department of Internal Services, 22 years of service.
Very good, and I think we have a couple of representatives also here from ISD. We have Sherri Walden and Facility Service Manager, Aaron Smith, who will assist in this presentation.
Good morning Chair, Board members. Sherri Walden, Assistant Director of Internal Services. I'm here to introduce Grace Palomino, who's retiring after 22 years of service within the county. The last 12 of those have been with facilities. And here to tell you more about her is our Division Manager, Aaron Smith, who shaved his beard last night. So many of us do not recognize him, but it really is him, so.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Board, CAO, staff. Grace Palomino worked with me in facilities for the last 18 months. She's a member of Facilities Team for roughly 12 years. Her positive attitude, her attention to detail, and just her general being cannot be replaced at facilities. She's a wonderful individual. We will definitely miss her. She got us through the pandemic with scheduling for maintenance and janitorial issues, and we wish her the best of luck in the future.
Excellent. And Grace, can you, would you like to share a few words about the journey that you got to experience here at Fresno County and what awaits you in retirement?
I experienced a great deal of, I don't know, I prospered from this whole journey, and I just look forward to venturing off to greater pastures. But I did enjoy my time here at the county. I learned a lot and met a lot of great people, and I'm really going to miss everybody.
Any relationship to Mike Palomino by any chance?
I am. He's a cousin.
Wonderful. That's good people. That's very good people.
Thank you.
Do you have any family members that are here with you today as well?
My aunt, Diane Palomino, is present.
All right, excellent. Any board members wishing to comment before we bring everyone forward?
Just one quick comment. You look way too young to be retiring.
Thank you, I appreciate that. That's a compliment.
Thank you and wish you the best. I know you're going to have, really enjoying all your family. I know the Palomino family is a big family, so it's going to be fun.
Thank you so much.
All right, with that, please come forward. We have some items we'd like to present to you. We'd also like to ask for your family members also to come forward so we can meet them and get a picture with them and you.
My wife works with Mike Palomino's wife, yeah, so. John Smith? Good morning, Sherri. There you go.
How are you?
Good, nice to meet all of you guys.
Pleasure. Good.
Good, how about you? You and my mom.
All right, thank you.
We now move to item number four. Under the Board of Supervisors, presentation and retirement plaque to Amy Dorbrennan, Department of Public Health, 38 years of service.
And I think we've got David Lukini here. But before he starts speaking, I just have to say that I have had the pleasure of working with Amy over the years, when I wore different hats, being involved in construction, lead abatement, just having an opportunity to work with the Department of Public Health when I was involved with low-income housing projects. And Amy has done so much more, and I was shocked to see 38 years of service. That's impossible.
Thirty-nine and a half, but HR has their rules.
Oh, hey, fair enough. So with that, David, why don't you share what?
Some highlights.
Some highlights, yes.
David Lukini, Director, Department of Public Health, Fresno County, thank you Board for having us this morning. It is my honor to recognize Amy Dorbrennan and her 38 years, eighties, I saw eighties. So Amy is our last, one of our last connections to the eighties. I was, so I was trying to find my Miami Vice outfit. I couldn't find it anymore. I was going to wear it, but we're very proud of all her work in the department. Pre-Department of Public Health, believe it or not, Amy partnered with Dan Lynch at Jones Ambulance. For those of you who remember Jones Ambulance, they were partners, and then it became American Ambulance. In 1984, Amy started as extra help in vector control at the Department of Public Health, handling fly issues, mosquitoes, for a couple of years. Amy then became an environmental health trainee in October of 1985. After her one month as a trainee, she took over the Mendota District as a registered environmental health specialist. She handled rabies control, animal control, water surveillance, consumer foods, employee housing. In those days, there were no cell phones or pagers, so she had to call a 1-800 number to get assistance out in the field. From 1991 to 2003, Amy did job sharing for 12 years so she could raise a family while she still covered the district. In 1997, 98, Amy trained for Childhood Lead Poisoning Prevention Program, where she assessed homes for children identified with high levels of lead in their blood. Approximately in 2007, she became a supervising registered environmental health specialist and oversaw the Childhood Lead Poisoning Prevention Program, rabies control, and consumer protection. In 2017, she took over the HUD grant, which led to remediation of a lot of lead hazards in homes that were pre-identified as built prior to 1978. And in 2020, Amy was the project manager for construction of the new animal shelter building, where she got to know Public Works and ISD very well. I know Public Works is being recognized after, so stay for the recognition. We are very proud of Amy's accomplishments with our department. She did a great job of helping me understand the vicious dog hearing process, which is very complex. I thought it was going to be simple. Amy has that passion, and you can't train passion. She always kept us up with any emergent issues that were occurring in her areas, urgent issues, and she always made sure she got her word across so we wouldn't miss anything. I congratulate on her almost 40 years working with Department of Public Health. I introduce you to Amy Dorbrennan.
Thank you, David. Good morning. As David mentioned, when I was hired, we didn't have personal computers. We didn't have cell phones or pagers. So when you got, finally, we got just digital, non-digital pagers, you'd go an hour to a payphone, call the 1-800 number, you'd get ahold of your director. I didn't call you. So that's kind of where we are and how far we've gone. One thing that hasn't changed is all the dedicated, wonderful employees that you have. And I've appreciated all the support and commitment of all my coworkers, leaders, all of you, because you made what I did possible, and I want to thank you.
Well, thank you. Yeah, that was amazing. You should run for office. Amy, do you have any family members that are here with you today?
I do, my husband David is here.
Wonderful. And board members, any comments from board members before we bring you forward?
Yeah, I would.
Yes.
Amy, I don't go as far back as you and Supervisor Magsick working together, but in the last couple of years, I want to let you know you've really helped District Two, myself and my staff, get a grip on animal control and some of the issues there. We've come out and met with you a couple of times and had some meetings and to try to really get down into the weeds on some of that stuff. And so it's been very informative, very, I can tell we're going to really miss you in 38 years. You know, we do a lot of retirements, but we go months and months and months and months before we see somebody with 38 years. And so I just wanted to let you know, I appreciate, we appreciate 38 years of service to Fresno County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Amy, thank you for all your hard work. I know you're going to leave a big void in our county family, and we're certainly going to miss you because especially with the history that you have and what you've brought it from then to now, it's just going to be tough to replace. So thank you very much.
Thank you Supervisor.
So with that, Amy, please come forward with your husband, and we have some items for you. We'd like to get a picture as well.
We now move to item number five. Under Supervisor Mendez, proclaiming May 19 through May 25, 2024, Public Works Week in Fresno County.
Supervisor.
Yes. You know, all departments are important, but I know for, especially me and Supervisor Pacheco, we have to deal with Public Works a lot. And to us, that's, you know, a very, very important department. You guys do tremendous work, and we want to honor you today. So Steve?
Thank you Supervisor Mendez. Chairman, Board of Supervisors, Steve White, Public Works and Planning. Today, the National Public Works Week celebration is a quality of life, so we put that in front of you at a copper, because as it ages, it will also hopefully put a smile on your face for what everyone in this room does, not just this department. From the Sheriff's Office to Facilities, ISD, all of them work together with us to do on the agenda item today. We added a few more miles, actually lost a few more miles for, we're still number one in the lane miles, center line miles in the state of California, 3,400 and change itself. It does come with a price. It comes with a price of people. And those people are hardworking and diligent. They show up 24 hours a day when needed, seven days a week, and just keep working and working and working. We are the unsung heroes of this county along with many of the other people. But the thing that I want to spend some time on today is who we are. We're eight divisions. We cover 6,000 square miles. We go from mountaintop to mountaintop, from river to river, and we service each and every one of you with your needs. Supervisor Magsick, you get the award this year. We gave you the most level of service because you needed it, and we service your constituents, so we have a special consideration for you. We go back 23 years, and that award is get or done. So thank you very much for working with us and tolerating us sometimes when we're not as responsive as you'd like us to, to be in. Paul Nerlin, we have another one for you, too. It's a get or done award itself. This department is built to build projects. After, every day, we go home, we come back in, and we get in our equipment, and we do everything we're supposed to do, and then some more. But we can't do it without legal counsel. We can't do it without the clerk of the board. Thank you Bernice for saving our bacon a few times this year, and you also get the consideration. But I'd like to take a moment and also thank some other members of this team. And Ed Hill, new to the team, Samantha Buck, and Amina Flores Becker. I'd like them to step up and take something from us, too, please. As I keep saying, we cannot do this alone. Samantha? And Amina, even though you deserted us.
I know, I'm sorry.
So 525 strong, we do our job every day, and we'll keep doing our job. And I want to give a big shout out to Supervisor Magsick. You have a press conference after this one. And in a few short months, we spent a little bit of money and cleaned up almost 1,200 dump sites with the support of the sheriff, the environment health, Amina's office, and the CAO's office itself. So a shout out to you for, thanks for the help on getting the funding for it. Thank you Supervisor Pacheco for giving us the funding. But every day, we show up to work, and we'll keep doing our work. I'd like to have Bernard, and Will make a couple of comments, please.
Thank you, Steve. Bernard, you're manager of Department of Public Works and Planning. This year's theme is quality of life. And just really quickly, some of the things that we've done as a department to try to enhance the quality of life for our constituents in Fresno County. One of the big things that we focused on recently is community engagement. And we're in the process of updating two of the county's community plans, Dalray and Biola. We've had countless community meetings, getting input. Our general plan process that we recently completed, we held over 30-plus community engagement meetings during that process. Development of our housing element. We're in the process right now of soliciting input from our residents, and then countless meetings out in the community, asking about infrastructure needs that has translated to grant applications and awards for infrastructure such as sidewalks, sewer infrastructure improvements, and then obviously our CBG program with our Citizens Advisory Committee. So that will continue to be a focus of the department is to engage our residents to try to enhance the overall quality of life. And with that, Will?
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I would like to thank Mr. White this morning, first of all, for his leadership and making me carry all the metal over this morning. You may not know this, but Mr. White's objective is that each of you have enough metal to make your own Iron Man suits when you get home. As I've already built mine. It's good quality metal. Anyway, I have about 40 minutes to update you on some Capitol Project things right now. I hope that's acceptable. I'm joking. Just wanted to update you on some of the things that we spoke about a couple of weeks ago. On the hearing of May 7, we gave you an update on some of the Capitol Projects. We have rolled out and received the statements of qualification for the two big projects, which are Clovis Library and Reedley Library. We have nine respondents, which is very encouraging. At first blush, I have not rated them yet, and it's all confidential, but I think we might have a good turn on this one. So very excited about that. We have 31 active projects and Capitol Projects, ranging from something very simple to something very big. So we're moving through on all of those. And with our new streamlined design-build process that we've developed through trial and error, I'm very hopeful that it'll help out on a lot of our projects. So that's all I have to say, and that's it.
So with each of our divisions, each of our managers, each of our staff, the passion, the commitment to do the right thing, do the job the right way, and just simply do the right thing is always going to be what we do. There's some uncertain times in the future, but with your leadership, the CAO's leadership and his staff, we know we're going to make it through and be able to be successful this coming year itself. So please enjoy your gift, and thank you very much for everything you do, including you, Dan. We could not do it without you. So with that, I may now answer any questions.
Any questions for Steve? Yes.
Comment. You know, if you live in an unincorporated community, Public Works is your government. That's who, you know, gets a lot of the, acts, you know, and gets a lot of things done for you. So you guys are, especially if you live in an unincorporated community, you guys have done a stellar job, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Nathan?
Yes.
And Supervisor Mendez, as you know, in District Two, we don't have as many roads to fix, right? But I do, we do have just scores of projects that you help us with, and there's like always balls juggling in the air, just dozens of little things and big things. But one of the things that I would like to just say that I appreciate you and Bernard's help with me is the potential industrial park, which isn't even a reality yet, but we are taking lots and lots of meetings. You've spent lots of time helping me plan, helping us work through next steps. And so I appreciate all of the leadership and all the meetings that you take us through. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Steve, I want to thank you and Public Works for all the work that the department does. A lot of it is just done under the radar, responding to questions that we have as supervisors for our constituents and also any companies that are looking to locate to Fresno. They're probably one of the, your department is probably one of the first ones that they check in with to see what kind of land is out there that they can work with and locate into and make a determination from there. So you've always been helpful, and I know that Public Works fingerprints are everywhere, you know, from the mountains to the prairies, the rural communities, and the county islands. So you've touched every bit of Fresno County, but you also bring in revenue, and that's very important to us. So we want to thank you for that. We don't mention that enough in terms of the revenue the department brings in as well. Thank you so much, and your department.
I appreciate all the smooth pavement you've put down for my bicycle. And actually, this morning, I got to enjoy about 47 miles of pavement heading out to Pine Flat, so. And a lot of my colleagues who ride bikes appreciate that, too. So I'm very excited about the Clovis Library, Reedley Library project, which I believe we're still on track to go out to bid in August.
Correct.
All right, excellent. So with that, I think-
I don't ride bikes. I'm a low rider, but roads are very important to me.
With that, I think we have a proclamation, a resolution. So Buddy, would you like to, actually, anyone in the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion. Buddy, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I would. I would like to make the motion.
All right, we have a motion to approve in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. It passes unanimously. Steve, please step forward with any members of your team so we can take a picture with you.
Thank you.
Will?
Thank you, Iron Man. I like to live on the edge.
If you would grant us the opportunity to have Amina, Ed, and Sam step up with us, please.
It's going to be tough.
You know, you're the lettuce.
At this time, we'll take up the items that were pulled from consent from a member of the public. Item 56, under Social Services. Approve and authorize the chairman to execute an agreement with Turning Point of Central California Incorporated for Emergency Shelter Shreya's Center Services effective July 1, 2024, through June 3, 2029, which includes a two-year base contract and three optional one-year extensions, total not to exceed $6,217,146.
All right, and with that, I would ask staff to come forward to give us an initial presentation on this item, and then from there, I'll open it up to the public.
Good morning, Board. Amina Flores Becker, Deputy CAO. I have a presentation prepared, but I did want to start my comments by expressing a deep appreciation for the partnerships that we have throughout the county of Fresno in addressing homelessness in our county. And that includes the partnership with Pavarello House, who I know is here today and pulled the item. It is with these partnerships that we are able to continue moving the needle forward as we respond to and address the, excuse me, the homelessness needs in the communities throughout the county of Fresno, which leads me to the first point that I would like to make. And that is that as the county of Fresno, we are responsible for homelessness response in the entire geographic region of the county of Fresno. And that includes our rural cities and unincorporated jurisdiction, not just the homelessness response in the city of Fresno, which it is important to note has its own homelessness funding allocation from the state. And just to put that into perspective or into context, in the last month alone, we have received, or I should say, we have addressed and responded to large homelessness encampments throughout rural areas of the county as well as unincorporated, our own unincorporated jurisdiction, including in Districts 1, 3, and 4. And that's just in the last month. Also in the last month, we have received requests for support from some of our rural cities, including the city of Kalinga, Huron, Mendota, and Selma in addressing, requesting support to address homelessness needs in their cities. the county, as well as your board's priorities in addressing homelessness needs of our county. The ad hoc committee came up with several recommendations related to homelessness spending, including a proposed cap to special population shelter beds in the county. At the time, they recommended a cap of ten beds, which was nine percent of the county-funded shelter beds. That recommendation was provided, or made to the FMCOC Board and approved, which is how we entered initially into a partnership with Pavarello House for Naomi's House. The 2019 agreement was for ten beds total, and as we all know, after 2019, the COVID happened, and COVID brought specific COVID needs, as well as a large amount of COVID dollars. Those one-time funds allowed us to expand our partnership at Naomi's House to the point that for the last several years, we have funded almost the entire operational costs at Naomi's House. However, we are now having to revert back to pre-COVID levels of service because we are facing pre-COVID levels of funding or worse. So, the second point that I want to make is that Pavarello House brought to my attention their concerns of this fifteen percent impact early. We remain consistent with the FMCOC direction in the 2023 RFP for homelessness service agreements, and actually increased the cap to fifteen percent, but did include a cap based on that direction that we received in 2018, and Pavarello House brought that to my attention, that impact to their operations to my attention early. I appreciate that because what that did is it allowed me time to explore options for them and to help fill that funding gap issue. In that exploration work, one of the things that I did was reach out to my counterparts at the City of Fresno, which is where Naomi's House is located, and one, express a deep concern for the impacts of this fifteen percent cap to the Naomi's House operations, which Pavarello House communicated would and could likely lead to the closure of shelter beds, and then also inquire about any potential partnerships with the city to help address the issue. So, from there, the city staff and county staff have been vetting through a third-party funding solution, which we believe will be vetted through in August of this year. That was communicated to Pavarello House this past Friday at a meeting that we had with them, and, and it was discussed through some of the logistics, but, I mean, in conclusion, I, I do want to express that while I understand and appreciate and am, and am concerned about the impacts of the recommendation in front of you in this item today, I do believe that we will have a third-party funding solution to this, this situation in August, and that would allow the county to focus on the other homelessness needs throughout the County of Fresno, as well as pursue priorities that have been set forth by your board, including the maintenance of homelessness services specifically to families and children. That concludes my response, and I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for Amina? You want to wait till, okay. One quick question before I open it up to the public. Looking at the funding, the homeless funding that we have that is being divided up into basically nine different categories, but some CBOs are getting multiple awards, the, the question I have is the, the revenues that we have, do they have to, can they be spent all in a similar manner for homelessness, or are there specific categories that we have to divide that funding up for?
Right. So, because it is, this particular award is utilizing hap, homelessness housing assistance prevention funding, we have communicated to the state specific plans, funding plans whereby we categorize that funding into different service types, including shelter, which is the proposal that Pavarello House submitted for Naomi's House, and others. We, the, the, one requirement is that ten percent does have to go towards youth services specifically, but we communicated that spending plan to the state.
All right. Thank you. With that, Sal, is there anything you want to ask before I go to the public?
Yeah, Amina?
Oh.
I've got a question.
Yep.
No, just to keep it simple and basic, I was watching the news last night, and there was a story on, on this particular item-
Sure.
-with the issue of Naomi's House that was going to be cut from thirty-four beds to eleven beds.
Right.
So, where's that, where's the other twenty-three beds at?
Where is the other twenty-three beds going to be funded through at Naomi's House? Is that the question? So, that's, that's what we're seeking right now. That's the conversations that I'm having with the City of Fresno and other, you know, potential partners. That's, that's what we're exploring today. The recommendation in front of you is the award of the eleven beds due to our RFP's fifteen percent cap on special population beds.
So, we can't leave them at Naomi's House?
Our, our RFP included that fifteen percent cap, so the proposal that we received was consistent with that cap at eleven beds. That's, that's a proposal that we got from Naomi's House, and that's what we're recommending today.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. With that, I'm going to open it up to the public. Anyone in the public wishing to comment on this item, please step forward at this time.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Members of the Board. My name is Zach. I'm the CEO at Pavarello House. Thank you so much for this time today and your attention to this matter. First, I want to start with some gratitude. I think that it's good to be able to start with the reality that we do incredible work together. Pavarello House and the County of Fresno do some incredible things together that make huge impacts. In fact, today alone, thirty-two hundred meals will be served in this community out of the kitchen that this board and, and Paul and his team came up with two and a half million dollars of ARPA funds to make possible, and you guys have seen that for yourself. Today, we'll have a hundred people come to MapPoint. Today, we will have so many great things happen in people's lives at Pavarello House because of our work together at the county, with the county, and that includes, of course, Naomi's House Triage Center. When we started having this conversation, it's been about four months now, I think we've met with almost all of you, we've met with Paul, we've met with Amina and her team. We had several responses from your team. One was about equity, that this fifteen percent cap was done due to an equitable challenge with, as it pertained to the allocation of the resources. For me, I just feel like that's something that, in the opposite perspective for me, that that actually creates an inequitable access to services for women who are on our streets in this community. We were told that there was a landscape analysis that was done to come up with this fifteen percent cap. Unfortunately, we were never contacted about that, and, and even in fact, in the most recent pick count, it found that thirty-six percent of the people on our streets are in fact women. We're turning away women every single night, yet a landscape analysis found that a fifteen percent cap was appropriate for these funds due to what they found in their analysis. I think it's also very important to note that Naomi's House serves the entire County of Fresno. We have women who stay at Naomi's House from the entire County of Fresno. It is a resource that is available for all in the county, and to Amina's point, the other awarded grants and the other awarded dollars are here in the city of Fresno, and the same argument could be made. And so, we are not just serving the city of Fresno, we are serving people from the entire community. We were also told, of course, that there's no dollars, that there's not enough dollars to make this possible. Today, we see that there were no applicants, in fact, for bridge dollars. I don't know if those dollars would be available to be allocated. There were only three applicants, all of which are here in the city of Fresno, and the reality is, is we would not be here without the fifteen percent cap. This will lead to the closure of twenty-three beds for women in our community who are experiencing homelessness, and will make a dramatic impact in our community at a time when we're losing more shelter beds than ever before. Thank you so much for your consideration and for what you guys will do today.
And Zach, I have some questions for you-
Yes, sir.
-and some of my colleagues may have some questions as well. So, right now at Naomi's House, of the, the women that you are serving or have served over the course of the last year, what percent of the women are from the city of Fresno versus outside of the city of Fresno?
It's a very small percentage from outside of the city of Fresno, but mostly, that is geographic in nature. As you could imagine, somebody who's experiencing homelessness in a community where maybe they've grown up since they were a child, it's hard to say, hey, why don't you get in our van and come back to Naomi's House, and we'll get you a bed? We serve individuals experiencing homelessness throughout the entire county through our Rural Navigation Program, through MapPoint, and so we know about the needs that are throughout the county, and we offer this resource throughout the county every day, but it is a rare occurrence where someone wants to leave their geography, hop in a van with Pavarello House, and come have a stay at Naomi's House. That's just something that is a rarity. So, it would be a small percentage. I would guesstimate five to ten percent of all women served at Naomi's House would be from other communities besides the city of Fresno.
And it's my understanding that the city of Fresno, some representatives there have expressed interest, that's, you know, what was presented to us today, and it's my understanding that you were part of a conversation last week around that. If the city of Fresno was able to step up and provide funding, is that something that you would be open to, or do you have some hesitations in regards to that?
Well, today I'm here really to talk about the fifteen percent cap that was put on these particular dollars. The conversation with the city of Fresno, I would consider exploratory in nature. I don't feel as if it has been vetted up the line, and I wouldn't, at this point in time, I would have concern of that materializing, not to mention, there would still be a gap of several months that Pavarello House would be responsible to cover in operations while that may or may not get sorted. Also, remember, that has to go through city council approval. So, a conversation with administration staff about an exploratory conversation for dollars to shore up Naomi's House, for me, in my experience, we've got a long way to go before I'm prepared to say, yes, I feel secure with that partnership.
Two more questions. Looking at, the, the funding's been allocated, again, nine different categories, and if there were modifications made, if we eliminated the fifteen percent cap, ultimately, it would impact the funding that's laid out before us today to different, different organizations. This is a loaded question. So, do you believe that the work of Naomi's House is better than Turning Point, or Marjorie Mason Center, or Fresno EOC, or do you believe that you all do equally good work, and it's just a matter of trying to find dollars to support everyone?
Two responses. First and foremost, something that's very unique about Naomi's House is that it is the only shelter of its kind for single unaccompanied women in the entire county, and you made that all possible, and I find it to be a treasure and a unique resource that we provide here in the County of Fresno. Secondly, there were no applicants for the bridge funding that was allocated in the spending plan that Amina referred to. I believe the amount is approximately $700,000, if I recall correctly. Perhaps those would be available dollars that could shore up the short gaps in funding at Naomi's House, and, and I want to say, Nathan, the work of Marjorie Mason Center and Turning Point, and the EOC, and Selma Comm, and the others do absolutely incredible work in this community. There is no, we're not able to do the work ourselves at PAV, nor is Turning Point, nor is Marjorie Mason Center. It takes all of us to help meet the needs of, of our county, and so I, I'm always going to promote them, but of course, I'm here to talk about Pavarello House and Naomi's House today because that's my job, and I want to see thirty-four ladies in a bed there for the foreseeable future in partnership with you, the County of Fresno.
Thank you, Zach. Any other comments?
I've got one.
Yes, please.
What does the City of Fresno actually do for the PAV?
We have a number of very good partnerships with the City of Fresno. One of the largest, of course, is operating one of the largest shelters in, in the city of Fresno, at Hope Point. We operate a hundred and twenty-bed shelter there. We also do street outreach services with them as part of what they call their heart team, so we're able to provide that street outreach seven days a week, morning, noon, and night, to people on our streets. We're able to do a lot of incredible work with the city, and I think the partnership that happens, you know, with what the county is doing and what the city is doing really provides a wonderful, comprehensive service delivery for those experiencing homelessness in our community through Pavarello House.
Yeah. I have a lot of questions for Amin, several questions for Amina, but I do have one for Zach. Zach, how much do you charge, what is the cost per bed that you're, you're charging Fresno County?
Yes, so, so our bed cost was approximately $27,000, I believe? Twenty-four thousand dollars.
Twenty-four thousand. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. And I believe that the, the other funded beds had all different valuations on, on the costs of those beds. Turning Point, I believe, who will get a, who at this point is allocated a lion's share of the dollars, has the highest cost per bed, I think, at $38,000.
Yeah, that was going to be my next question to Amina.
Yes. It's a hard, and that's a, it's a hard math equation. Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you all for your time. Appreciate it.
Anyone else from the public wishing to comment on this item?
Good morning, everybody. My name is Sarah Mirhadi. I'm the Chief Programs Officer at Pavarello House. My first job ten years ago was actually the Director of Naomi's House. So, Naomi's House has a very special and dear place in my heart, so I will be very biased. We were very pleased in 2019 to become part of what we think is a state-of-the-art delivery of services, known as triage services. Firmly believe in that model, and I believe that the county is, is formed on that. And we were especially pleased during COVID to see that we were increased funding to be able to increase our capacity all the way up to about forty-two beds during the height of the pandemic. Whereas, I agree that there has been some landscape analysis that's been in 2018. We have known since then that the rise of homelessness has increased in our county since then, and the losing of beds does not address this. We also know that putting a cap on women and specialized populations is not equitable. Last year alone, sixty-seven percent of the women that we served at Naomi's House were women of color, and twenty-three percent were women that are fifty-five years and older. We do provide a specialized services that is unique to the other shelters. We are women-focused with their traumas. I don't want to have to, in this time, turn around and figure out which women will go out on the streets if this funding does not go through. I think it's very important to note that there is bridge housing money that is available that was not allocated, at least not according to the public records. I also know that asking dispensation from the state of California is not a hard task, and that if you go on the website, they even have a form for it. So, I asked you today, how am I, and how is Pavarello House going to choose which women have a right to receive these state-of-the-art services that the county has produced and which do not? I don't want to make that decision because I do know what happens to women when they are not in shelter and providing safe service, services. We have two women that are currently residing in our shelter right now that also will speak, including a former board member that utilized Naomi's House services. Again, it's not just a numbers game, but a real human being is behind every single one of those persons that we have to let go from the streets. And yes, we do serve rural Fresno County, and we have, on many occasions, have brought people over to Naomi's House and to provide those services. We are open twenty-four hours. We do provide access to homeless services through our access site, which is open to both men and women. And Naomi's House, back in 2019, was the first twenty-four-hour access site and continues to be so. So, I asked you today, Board of Direct, Board of Supervisors, to really look at the state funding that is available and be able to allocate it to where it should be. Thank you.
Happy Tuesday, everyone. My name is Yellowfeather Noriega, and I had suffered from chronic homelessness from pretty much a lot of my life. I have eleven years clean, and the first time that I had really wanted to get out of the situation, when I was homeless, I was in a domestic violence situation, I had reached out to my pastor and his wife and said that I wanted change. They tried to get me into the local domestic violence shelter here, but I did not qualify, not even with a black eye. So, my pastor's wife knew somebody that worked at the Naomi House, and they got me in there at three o'clock in the morning. Now, being there has really been beneficial to me and my journey throughout battling with drugs and alcohol and homelessness, and I couldn't have done it without the Naomi House. They took me in as I was, and the only thing that I needed to qualify to get in there was to be a woman in need and homeless. And it breaks my heart to hear that we are being deemed and, and docked because it's a women's shelter. You know? Happy Tuesday, everyone. My name is Yellowfeather Noriega and I had suffered from chronic homelessness from pretty much a lot of my life. I have 11 years clean. And the first time that I had really wanted to get out of the situation, when I was homeless, I was in a domestic violence situation, I reached out to my pastor and his wife and said that I wanted change. They tried to get me into the local domestic violence shelter here, but I did not qualify, not even with a black eye. So my pastor's wife knew somebody that worked at the Naomi house and they got me in there at 3:00 in the morning. Now, being there has really been beneficial to me and my journey throughout battling with drugs and alcohol and homelessness. And I couldn't have done it without the Naomi house. They took me in as I was and the only thing that I needed to qualify to get in there was to be a woman in need and homeless. And it breaks my heart to hear that we are being deemed and, and docked because it's a women's shelter. You know, there was a case manager that, that worked there and that I had seen, there was a woman that was drunk. She was drunk out of her mind and I was very upset that I was in that situation. And, and a worker there said, we will not turn any woman away regardless if she's drunk, high, abused, neglected, angry, as long as she's not hurting you or anybody else, you know, or herself, she can stay. And so to hear that women are, you know, it's, it's just really heartbreaking to hear. I, I couldn't have done it. I couldn't have been here right now, standing before you as a board member now for the Naomi, for the Pavarello, if it wasn't for the Naomi house. They reached out to me with love and nurturing and guidance, didn't care who I was, what color I was, or what my situation was. They just wanted to nurture me, love me, and help me. Where are the women going to go if you take that away? Where are women like me going to go that with other, with other shelters or other places for women, I did not qualify? Where, where would I go? Where would other women like me go? It's, it's just very heartbreaking. So I hope that you consider that to keep all the beds that we have, and I would like to see more beds, because this is the only place for women here in Fresno. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair and Board members. Thank you for having me here. My name is Heidi Michael and I am, first and foremost, a volunteer, regular volunteer at Pavarello. I've been doing that for two to three years now and really honored to serve on the board as well. In my time volunteering there first, and I want to thank you also for the incredible support of the restaurant. I got to witness that whole process and how it's been transformative for so many lives. And also during that process, in the last few years, I've volunteered a lot at Naomi's house and gotten to know a lot of the women. And it is such an incredible place. I'm sure all, I know all of you have been down to the campus there and you can see that the areas surrounding Pavarello are a scary place. And a lot of times I work with Zach, we, Zach is incredible, as you all know, and has church service every Tuesday night. And when I leave that campus every night and it's getting dark and those gates shut behind me, I think about how scary it must be to be on those streets. And especially for the women on those streets. And getting to know the women that are in Naomi's house and to know that they have a safe place to go, a safe place to recover from their traumas, from their addictions, from whatever they're dealing with. It's, it's been such an honor and a privilege to play a small role in that and to witness it. And then to find out as a board member that we might actually have to ask 23 of those women who are currently there to leave and to say, we're sorry, there's a cap. There's a cap on this and you have to go back outside on those gates. And good luck. I hope you're safe. Come for a meal tomorrow, if that's the best we can do. Fresno County has done so much for Pavarello and I know in this area that you can, you can do better and you can help continue to make an impact on, on the lives of women. And we've got some women here today, they're human beings, who we are protecting every night right now. So, thank you for your time and I really hope that you reconsider and, and find a way that together we can make this work. Thank you so much.
My name is Linda. I'm part of Naomi's. And I would just like to say, Naomi's is a place of caring, sharing, and loving. And it's lots of people, they have an assessment, like 15 to 20 a day. And they need Naomi. You know, it's hard being out on the streets and every day is something shooting out in the streets. And they need the help and the growth that Naomi puts out. And so I would just like to thank you all for hearing me out. But Naomi is a good place along with the Pavarello. Thank you all.
My name is Janet May. If it wasn't for Naomi's house, I wouldn't be in a shelter because I have an emotional therapy doc. I've been calling all around since May 3rd of last year for a shelter that would accept me and my doc. When I came over to MAP and they know I, my condition with my emotional dog and the problem I've been having, they told me to go check Naomi. It took me, the first time, three assessments. And it made me happy after the third assessment says, you're here. I spent about close to two months with Naomi. Then I went to a boarding care, which kind of got more confusing and stuff like that. And the prob, the way I was told is, they don't want my doc because she's too aggressive when I go look for work. Because I have another spare bed and they try to show it off and I wasn't there. So when I returned to Naomi, it took me just one talk and an agreement. For this year, this time, I'm going to finish my 90 days and be able to do what I want to do, which is get apartment that accepts my doc and feel safe. Because I've been through the streets, not here in Fresno, but Monterey County, homeless. And I used to be an advocate for the homeless and that over there. So I know how they feel. And I even told the ladies my experience. And that made them say, we can be working on it. And if, just recently, we made a list of things, if we needed to, we would like to start doing fundraisers for Naomi. We do not want to lose Naomi House. We do not want to leave our safety, our security, or our friendship, or our good workers, like our workers and our care person at MAP. We do not want to leave. We feel good, we feel safe, and we do not want to lose Naomi House, no matter what. We'll do whatever we can to help out if we need to. Okay? Thank you.
Carrie Catalano, thank you for your time. I wasn't going to speak today, but I do want to put a couple of things on the record, supervisors. Number one, I do appreciate the CAO's office and all of you for taking the time to listen to this very important matter. Over the course of the last five years, millions of dollars has been spent, regardless of COVID dollars or not, to shore up our homeless prevention network. We are all Fresno County residents. I am quite tired of hearing that I live in the city of Fresno. I am also a county of Fresno resident. And what we do is a collective effort. And when we keep putting jurisdictions at play here, it separates the conversation. While I appreciate the conversation with the city of Fresno, it has not been vetted. I talked to the mayor's chief of staff. It's a process that has not been put through anything yet. It was a last-ditch effort, from my perspective, after four months of conversation, to try to find a solution that is not a solution today. Before you, as a recommendation, to approve a contract with the Pavarello House for $264,000. It is a $500,000 reduction, which will eliminate millions of dollars that this board has approved to support the women of Fresno County. To support the women of Fresno County, nowhere for them to go. Your staff did not one time talk to the Pavarello House or any service providers before they put a pre-pandemic, pre-pandemic cap in a NOFA. We reached out, asked would it be there, not one call back. Nor did the CAO's office know that that cap was in play based on our meeting before the NOFA was released. Nor was it vetted with any of you one time. Additionally, nor was it in your staff report how it was going to impact. The public document never once said that 23 beds would be eliminated because of this cap. It does say you have no time to act. It's brought to you at the last minutes. You have to approve these contracts, but yet bridge housing has not been allocated. It is a little bit personal because lives, lives matter to all of us. So I am asking you to deny the recommendations and to consider reopening the NOFA for an extended period of time, to have staff just look at the triage without the cap. We're also asking you that you approach the state to reallocate, reallocate the bridge housing funding so you can reallocate that funding to programs that exist. We're not pitting one against the other. We're all working together. Thank you for your time. I'm going to close the public portion. I'm going to ask Amina to come forward because I think some supervisors have some additional questions. So with that, Steve, we're going to start with you.
Okay. All right. Amina, are single women welcome at the other locations?
Correct. The Turning Point recommended agreement is a general population. The Welcome Home Center is a general population shelter, which welcomes women, single women. The Marjorie Mason Center recommended contract also welcomes single women, but they have to be victims of domestic violence. And then there, there are a couple of other options for single unaccompanied women, which I did want to highlight, one of them being Evangel Home and the other being Raise, Rescue the Children, which is the Fresno Mission Shelter.
Okay. And you mentioned Turning Point, or single, do you know how many of the folks that are being served at Turning Point are single women?
It's, it fluctuates. I would say on any given day, it's probably between 40, 40 to 50% of the population there. But I don't know that, I don't have that information.
Understood. And then to follow up with the question that I asked Zach about Naomi's house, how much is it cost Fresno County per bed at some of the other locations like Turning Point that you mentioned or any of the other?
So Turning Point, and I just did really quick math on this, it's approximately $38,000 per bed. I believe Naomi's house communicated, I think approximately $24,000 per bed. And again, going back to Turning Point, that's a general population shelter, so that, that one wasn't capped. Marjorie Mason Center, based on the quick math that I did, is about $17,000 per bed.
Okay, so Turning Point, Marjorie Mason's a little bit of a different animal, but Turning Point is a general shelter. And so it's $14,000 a bed more than Naomi's house. And so this is a two-year contract, is that correct?
Two-year base contract with optional three, three one-year extensions.
All right. And then talk to me for a little bit about what it would look like to reopen the NOVA and begin this discussion again.
Yeah, so the current proposals, or I'm sorry, the current item recommends agreements with our partners effective July 1. The reason for July 1 is because current contracts expire on June 30th. So opening up a new RFP requires anywhere from 30 to 60 days to open up the process and come back to your board. That could lead to a gap in services effective July 1. I would estimate that it would probably take us well into August or even September or maybe later to come back to your board if we were to open up a new RFP, go through the whole process, negotiate contracts, and, and come back. I, I would guess that it would likely be at the earliest August or September.
Okay, but if the board decides to go that route, we have the capacity, we would get that done?
Yeah. Yeah, we, staff would, staff would take board direction and get that done. I, I do want to, again, reiterate that while the exploration that we have done is, is not fully vetted through, I am hopeful that we will have a third-party funding solution in, in August with an effective date of September 1. So my recommendation to your board would be if, you know, because I understand that that is uncertain at this point and, and I completely understand the concern related to that, my recommendation would be that your board provide direction to staff today to come, prepare an item, have it ready, come back to your board in the second board date in August. If, if funding, a third-party funding agreement is not executed in August, we would be ready to go to fill the funding gap temporarily because the, the bridge housing dollars, we have plans for. And, and that includes addressing specific homelessness needs and priorities that your board has set forth, specific to families and children. So that, that would push out those plans a little bit, but, but that, that is a recommendation that, you know, your, your board could take direction on today.
Okay. What would it look like to convert bridge housing dollars to this type of project here?
It would take just a communication and, and approval of the state.
The state could say no?
The state could say no. That's, they typically respond to our needs and, and we, you know, would just need to justify that shift in prioritization. However, I, I do need to make it really clear that that would take funding away from the priorities that this board has set forth, specific to services for families and children that are experiencing homelessness.
Okay, but nobody applied for the bridge funding dollars, so you're talking about taking away priorities. So if nobody applied for that pot of money, you know, I would really, one of my comments is going to be that I'm very interested in petitioning the state to allow us to use bridge dollars for this type of a project. Unless there's some other project that you haven't mentioned to us yet that you're planning on those dollars going to, I'd be, I'd like to hear about that, but...
Yeah, and we do have plans that we are working on that are specific to those services. We, based on current conditions and current funding levels, we anticipate, or we assume that that is why we didn't receive proposals for the bridge housing. My recommendation would be that we continue to pursue that because there are ideas, projects that we have, that we're still vetting through that are specific to those services and would allow us to continue.
Can we talk about those just for a minute? I mean, because I have to prioritize, that's what I'm being asked to do today. So what types of projects would those bridge dollars be used for?
So there are current existing shelters and facilities that serve families and children that are currently being funded by other funders. We have had conversations that we are looking to prioritize those because those fund, third-party funding are going to pull out. Our plan is to assume those responsibilities currently in July of 2025.
Okay. I, I'm, I'm just going to make a couple of my comments and listen really closely to my colleagues, but a couple of things as both sides have been presented. For me, I think the 15% is a little arbitrary and even though it's arbitrary, even if it is to be arbitrary, it's kind of low. So I think, I kind of disagree with that 50%, 15% marker. And then I'm certainly not comfortable betting on the city of Fresno being able to maneuver in time to help Naomi's house. So I'm not dismissing or dissing the city of Fresno. I'm just saying, it's crunch time for these folks and I'm not, it doesn't seem like a real great bet on something that we have no security on and has to go through a lot of other government processes down the street. So not, not comfortable betting on that. And then I already mentioned, I'm interested in petitioning the state to allow us to use bridge funding for projects like Naomi's house. I am open, I'll listen to my colleagues, I am open to reopening the NOVA and going through that process again. Now here's the thing that I'm concerned about that affects both sides. You know, I'm concerned about government spending above its means. During the COVID years, we were given additional dollars that we don't have anymore and that is a cold hard fact and I think we have to face that fact. Now, it's unfortunate, I looked up, while I was waiting, the, the federal government has decided, I checked online, went to how much money are we giving Ukraine? And the Council of Foreign Relations report was the first thing that popped up on Google, we're giving Ukraine $175 billion. Okay? So I would, of course, if it was up to me, rather see ladies like the ones that presented here today get the help that... here today get the help that they need, but that's not what we get. We're getting X number of dollars and that money's been cut back after COVID. So we have to face that, and I'm not a big fan of government spending beyond its means. And that's how you get into fiscal trouble, and I'm very protective of Fresno County not going that direction. So I have a problem. I don't want to just manufacture this money out, take it out of a general, general fund, do all those sorts, sorts of things that puts us in jeopardy. But I am open to looking at the bridge housing to support Naomi's House and even reopening the NOVA if necessary, and I want to hear from my colleagues on that. Thank you.
Supervisor Mendez?
He talks so long, I almost forgot what the hell. All I can see, and I think, I think Sal and, and Brian probably have more to add, but we need, I'm looking more now to the C A O because this whole project needs a parachute so we can land back in a better place. And I'm kind of looking for you to, you know, and I think Amina had said a few things that we can kind of continue on temporarily what's going on, where we don't cut it, but yet we, we end up in a better place than, than doing what, what the, the item says. So that's basically what I'm, I'm looking for, for you to figure out what that parachute looks like. And I, I'm kind of looking over here to Brian and Sal to see if they kind of have an idea of what it needs to look like.
And I can pause my comments if, if you'd like to speak first.
You want me to go, Sal? Yeah, I'll go. I would agree with both of my, my colleagues to the left here. We do have to face the reality that our funding is being reduced. We as a county, our entire funding from the state of California is being reduced this year, and these are ramifications of that funding. And I too, like you Supervisor Brandal, believe we need to live within our means or we will all go broke. And for Supervisor Mendez and I and the rest of us that have our own businesses, we adhere to that rule every day because we have a payroll to meet and different things, and we simply have to live within our, our means. I believe Supervisor Mendez is accurate, though we have to provide some sort of parachute. Now what that looks like and how we go about that, that's for us to determine. I'd like to make a note, this board generally, we don't, we don't micromanage. We wait until it comes here before we get to make our final decision. So we are unaware, as was stated, we don't know anything about the 15% cap or the R F Ps going out. That's a staff level. That's not our call to make, but I'd agree with you Supervisor Brandal, when that does come to us, I believe that number is an arbitrary number. Another body picked that number, and I for one do not agree with the number. So I like what Zach said earlier when Supervisor Magzig tried to put him on the spot. They're working together. So if we take money from one to another, we're going to hurt another organization. So we have to come up with a solution that benefits everyone and doesn't hurt one over, over the other because they all work in tandem to provide it for all of our residents. I think a good point was made that 95% of the people come from the city of Fresno. I would look to the city of Fresno to help with this because the majority of the residents are coming from the city, but we are the county and we are responsible for everyone. While we come from five separate districts, we are responsible for the entire county of Fresno, which includes the large city of Fresno and like Supervisor Mendez and I, all of our rural communities to the west and east of the county. So we have an obligation to everyone, so we need to find a solution that works for, for everyone. I am curious as to, we've heard a lot about the bridge funding. I think Supervisor Brandal made a very valid point. That money has not yet been allocated is the way I understand it. Is that correct?
It has not been awarded because we did not receive proposals for that category in the R F P. It, it is allocated to those services, but it has not, it was not awarded in this item, or it's not being recommended for award in this item because we didn't receive proposals.
Then as Supervisor Brandal mentioned, are we not allowed to use some of that money to get this gap?
We, we can, and that's part of the recommendation that, that I made is to reallocate essentially some of those funds to temporarily provide a fill of the funding gap so that, one, that allows Pavarello House to seek out other third-party funding and allows, like you said, a parachute and a softer landing.
And then again, like Supervisor Mendez, I'm a little bit more direct. So when we say third-party funding, and that's a big broad term, we're actually seeking funds from the city of Fresno. Is that not accurate?
That is accurate.
So that is our third-party fund. So our third-party funds would be that we are going to reach out to our colleagues in the city of Fresno and ask them to help a shelter that is in, within their city limits that provide 95% of the services to their residents of their city limits and ask them for some assistance to help them get through this funding. Are we not?
That is, that is what we're vetting through right now. That is what we're exploring.
And you've reached out to the administration over there and have asked them, and you have received their support that they are going to approach the city council with this?
Correct.
Well, again, like my colleagues, you may be a little skeptical on that, but hopefully this would be one of those instances that the county of Fresno and the city of Fresno could work together for the greater good of the residents that we all serve. So I for one am hopeful that that can take place. But again, we don't have that luxury to know what the city council will ultimately do. At some point, the funding will go down. Pavarello House, Naomi's House will have to do more with less, but a 200, $400,000 cut is a bit extreme to take at one time. I don't care who you are. So like Supervisor Mendez said, we have to provide some sort of parachute or a step-down approach so that they can adjust because what is currently being presented to them is more than any person should or be able to absorb. So we need to find a solution to that. I'm open, like Supervisor Brandal, if we want to open the whole thing up again, take the cap. Maybe there's another way that we leave things in place, but we provide some sort of assurance that we will provide the gap from July 1 to August 31st if in the event the city of Fresno does not come through. But who, how will we pay the money from July 1 to August 31st while we seek this third-party funding?
We.
Do we have a mechanism for that?
We could prepare an item that retroactively helps fund the gap in, in the second board date in August. So that would assure that, that July and August period, if.
So that we wouldn't put the financial stability of the Pavarello House at risk if in the event the quote, "third-party."
Right.
Doesn't come through, we would provide their backdrop that we will assess that funding. But if that doesn't come through, what do we do with the other 10 months?
So that's, that's my recommendation is if it doesn't come through, we would do a retroactive agreement in the second board date in August that your board would consider going back to July 1 through July, through June 30th of 2025.
And allocate them their normal funding that they're used to with the understanding that this is for a short period of time and your funding will be reduced and you now have a year to try and maneuver to adapt like we will have to do here at the county because we're not going to get our full funding that we received in years past. We will have to make cuts across the board through all of our departments, all of our services, and we will have to do more with less. So we will give them opportunity to do the same as we are being asked to do as the board of supervisors.
Right, and your board could give us that direction today to, to prepare that item and have it ready for the second board date in August.
There you go Supervisor Brandal, that's your solution. Thank you.
Any other comments? Yeah, please, Sal.
Yeah, you know, I couldn't, I couldn't agree more with everything that's been said, so there, I'm really not going to say too much else other than I'm interested to hear what the C A O has prepared. I do have two motions that I'd like to, to present later that we can discuss, tear apart or not accept or whatever, but at least to start off the conversation in terms of what direction we want to go. And I think that that's, that'll just be important enough to start off that part of the, of the conversation that we're having now. So I'll be interested to hear what the C A O has to say, but I'm pretty, I'm pretty much on board with the board in terms of where we're, we're headed.
All right.
Good morning, Paul Nerland, your C A O. Just a few comments and responding to Supervisor Mendez's comment as well. First, Pavarello House has been an amazing partner. I don't need to restate that. All of us agree on that. I also want to remind everybody, last year, your board adopted a proclamation supporting a statewide initiative called the At Home Initiative, and that was focused on more coordination, but also back to the state because their funding stream is different every year, different rules, and that makes our job and your job difficult as we try to come up with a consistent solution to homelessness. They took a step in that direction with better coordination in this last round of homelessness funding. And I want to give credit to Amina. Despite public reports about our relationship with the city of Fresno at times, the relationship that is being garnered at the staff level between Amina and her colleague there has generated good work and better coordination I think we've had in the past. So I want to give credit to Amina, also to your board for the staff that you've added with Dylan who's with us here focusing in on this. Getting back to the solution, I think really Supervisor Pacheco, you, you already summarized well what is, I think, the best solution. At the end of the day, your board sets the priorities. When those priorities are in black and white, I do think that we should come back to you and revisit those priorities in light of changing state funding to make sure that we see not just the black and white, but the impact of that funding in this community. So I, I would return to what Supervisor Pacheco summarized quite well as I think a, a solution that seems to be in line with what I'm hearing from your board. All right, we're ready for motions unless if anyone else has anything else they'd like to say.
Yes, thank you. I've got two motions just to, like I said, start off the conversation and see where you, what the board would like to do with it. Number one, and I'd like to also state that I've, I've had ongoing conversations with the Pavarello House over time, simply they're in my district, work with them closely, so this is all part of that as well. And number one, I'd like to make a motion that we do not accept the recommendation under this triage center item and that staff reopen the R F P for a period of five days with the removal of the 15% funding gap for special populations and that this item be brought back to the board at our last meeting in June. And the second one, also like to make a motion that we petition the state to grant us a reallocation of the bridge housing funding to our triage centers funding pool and that those funds be distributed to awardees without the 15% cap. And that's the motion I'd like to make and open it up for discussion.
We'll need a second before we have discussion. Does anyone want to make a second to that motion?
I'll second it, and then I'm going to ask Dan to chime in about, can you make that work?
We can always make it work. When you change procedures for R F Ps as you go, people could always try and challenge it. It's always a balancing act in terms of whether you've allowed enough opportunity for people to be heard and to respond. Remember, there's no, I'm not sure, there's probably a requirement in the regulations for this for R F Ps to be issued if there's.
Yeah, I'd like to hear from the director. I, I don't agree with the first motion. I would agree with the second motion, but I don't believe we have adequate time or it's in the proper interest. I think what I had stated earlier is that we move things forward as is. We provide the bridge funding for the two months. We ask our partners to help us, and then if that doesn't happen, then we can open things up. Otherwise, we're going to convolute this, and I don't believe it'd be in the best interest of our residents to throw the baby out with the bathwater and start over. That's my personal opinion, but again, I adhere to the rule of three.
That's fine.
But I don't think the, the first motion is viable for what we need, but I'd like to hear the director's response.
But a thought that I have here real quick, Supervisor Pacheco, I agree with you, and since we have that motion in second on the floor, we can either entertain a counter motion when the time comes.
Or I can remove the second.
If, if that happens, then it could, it could die if there wasn't a, you know, a second, so.
I just wanted to hear what he had to say.
No, no, that's perfect. Well, I'll, I'll ask you, do you want to remove your second?
Yes, I do.
All right, so is there any other second to that motion? If not, that motion will die. And now let's hear from the director.
From the director.
Sonya Bougade, Department of Social Services Director, and I apologize for not stopping up earlier to provide some clarity. So we are dedicating about half of our funding over the next five years to shelter. That's important to note. So, and it's important for, for us to consider that in addition to shelter, bridge housing, exits to permanent housing are essential. Otherwise, we, we simply will not have an ability to shelter enough folks. I absolutely appreciate a partnership with Pavarello's House. They're essential. So is Marjorie Mason Center, so is Turning Point. We do not have sufficient shelter beds in our county for any population. The $9.2 million in totality that you're awarding for shelter funds 56 beds. 26 of those are for specialized populations, 11 in Naomi's House and 15 in Marjorie Mason, Marjorie Mason Center. That's 26 primarily dedicated to women, which is 46% of the total. So while you're correct that 15% in the R F P was a arbitrary number, now it wasn't just an arbitrary number, it was a number deduced with a group that's informed about this work that our office participated in, C O C participated in, C A O's office participated in to determine limits to specialized populations. That means that for the open beds served by Turning Point is open to everyone. So while it's not sufficient, it's not sufficient across the board. And if you look at our pit count, the number of homeless men has actually grown, so we've done better sheltering women. I'm not saying it's sufficient, it just, but you're correct, we are working with reduced dollars overall, and unfortunately, and I hate to say this, we are going to be working with less dollars in the next year and year after. So no matter what plan we put in front of you, it is not going to be sufficient to meet the need. My recommendation to, to you would be to award the R F P as possible. This has been a, more than a four-month process. The R F P was put together with, with input not just from our department, but from across the board and agencies. It was, we had put in, we had put in a request for proposals and proposals came in. They were all funded at different levels based on responses from the vendors. And we, following the county R F P process, really took all of that into consideration. Two R F P committees with multiple outside and internal staff reviewed the proposals and recommended the funding as is. It unfortunately would take a lot more than a few days to come back to you, and what I'm worried about, it would cause a gap in service. So my recommendation and request to you would be to fund it as is and then to direct us to look at other solutions to help with a step-down process. I do worry that if your expectation is an ongoing funding, that we simply won't have sufficient dollars to do that long-term.
Director, I, I personally, as one board member, I would, I would agree with you. You are the, the expert in the field, and even now at the current levels, I believe every organization is turning people away every day, every day, because we simply don't have the resources to give everyone a bed. So we need to remember that while the point was made that would be a reduction in beds, we don't have enough beds as it is. So that's why for me, again, I would accept that. I would make the motion that we accept the proposal as is, but direct staff to find a funding source to fill the gap, that we reach out to the city of Fresno and let them turn us down and the residents of their city limits. And then if that happens, then come back to us, that we will again find a solution to help the city of Fresno.
I'll second that.
We have a motion as second with this counter motion. Any further discussion?
I just want to make a point because I've been hearing about the 15%. You know, the 15% thing, if it was 15%, we were only going to allocate 15% for women with green eyes. That makes more sense, but women make up 50% of our population, if not a little bit more, and I just don't agree with maxing out. I mean, it makes some sense to have shelters dedicated to women, right? I mean, I've visited shelters across the state as a city council member, and almost every municipality has large shelters dedicated just for women's. To me, that makes sense, and so they're 50% of the population, so I don't like the 15% deal. So I. So I understood what you said about it. I mean, I can understand it, and if it was a different type of a segment of our society, I can understand a 15%, but not when we're talking about women.
But Supervisor Brandow, this does make the women portion greater than 50 because the ones specialized just for women is at 46, but then you have to account the beds that are at Turning Point that are for everyone. So when you do that, in my opinion, in my math, you are over 50% to help the women in our county.
Well, I'm not going to disagree with you, but what I'm saying is on the 15% thing, going forward--
I agree with you, yeah. We shouldn't have the cap.
Yeah, because it makes a lot of sense to build a shelter that's just for women. It happens all over the place.
Correct.
Do you ready to vote, or any more comments? All right, we have a motion to second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I think it carries unanimously then. All right, thank you.
We now return to our regular agenda. All items from consent were heard that were pulled from consent. So we now are on item number six, under the administrative office, conduct public forum in accordance with government code section 7283.1D, receive statistical report from the sheriff regarding the United States Immigration and Customs Enforcement access provided to incarcerated and in jail during 2023, and receive public comment.
Good morning, Chairman Magsick and members of the board. Here today to present information regarding S B 54, the Truth and Values Act. The data I have here is from 2023. It's a summary of the individuals who were transferred to ICE during that year. We had a total number of bookings of 25,810. We received 204 ICE detainers or holds. We had no ICE interviews conducted within our facility, and we transferred 39 individuals to Immigration and Customs Enforcement. A quick breakdown of who those individuals were, 30 of those 39 were crimes against persons. In fact, one-third of them were individuals who were involved in felony domestic violence crimes. That totaled number of 13. We had three that were involved in sex crimes. Two of those three were sex crimes involving children under the age of 14. We had three property crimes and three felony drug crimes. That concludes my presentation. If you would like any specific details or have any questions, I'm here to answer those at this time.
Questions for the sheriff. These Truth Act forums are difficult. I know that your office does a great job as far as this board is concerned, and I really appreciate you being here today. Anyone in the public wishing to comment on this item?
Hello, Luis Ojeda with the ACLU of Northern California. I am an organizer, and I'm based here in Fresno. Our immigrants rights program director submitted this comment yesterday, but there's copies available in the back if anybody wants to see it, and then I'm just going to reiterate the statement here. So since 2018, Fresno County has held Truth Act forums to provide transparency about the working relationship between the Fresno County Sheriff's Office and immigration enforcement authorities as required by state law. To better understand the extent of collaboration between the Fresno County Sheriff's Office and ICE, each year, the ACLU of Northern California submits the Public Records Act requests for communications between the two agencies. For years, the Sheriff's Office has failed to respond to our requests in a timely manner. Most recently, it took more than three years to produce some responsive records to a request we submitted in March of 2020-21, and part of the request remains unfulfilled. Each year, the Sheriff's Office only discloses how many people it transfers into ICE custody and the number of ICE detainers the office received. This lack of complete transparency is unacceptable. The community deserves to know the full scope of the Fresno County Sheriff's Office's interactions with ICE to ensure that it is complying with the state sanctuary law. For example, the Sheriff's Office should share any changes it made to its policies concerning the implementation of the sanctuary law, the number of email exchanges it had with immigration authorities, and the amount of funds it allocates to continuing its role in immigration enforcement. Furthermore, the Sheriff's Office must respond promptly and completely to all requests for public records. Thank you.
And I will note for the record that we have received that email as well. Seeing no further public comment, I'll--
In response to those comments that were just made, let it be noted for the record that 204 ICE detainers were received by our office. 39 of those were granted after a judge ordered these individuals to be turned over to ICE. There were no, I mean, zero, interviews conducted by Immigrations, Customs, and Enforcement in our facility. I've gone over the actual crimes that were occurred. There are serious felony crimes, persons crimes, drug trafficking, sex crimes against children in our community, and as previously stated in the past item, we take domestic violence very seriously. And 13 of those 39, which is exactly one-third, fall under California Penal Code section 273.5, which is a felony. Therefore, that totals the 39 that were turned over to make our community safer. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. And again, we appreciate all that you do. You have our full support, so thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to close the public portion on this item and bring it back. This is just a report. There's no action that is necessary, and so with that, we're, we'll move to the next item.
We now move to item number seven. Under Public Works and Planning, Consider Petition for Partial Cancellation of Agricultural Land Conservation Contract Number 2808.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. Tawanda Matunga, Principal Planner with the Department of Public Works and Planning. This item comes before you with the recommendation for approval from the Agricultural Land Conservation Committee at its March 13, 2024 meeting. The partial cancellation is to remove a 2.21 acre portion of a 37.98 acre parcel from the Williamson Act contract to allow for the creation of a 2.21 acre homesite exemption parcel. This concludes my presentation, unless you have any questions for me at this time.
Thank you for that presentation. Any questions for staff? All right, seeing none, I'll open it up to the public. Anyone in the public wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion and bring it back. This is an item that's in my district, and I would move for staff's recommendation.
I'll second it.
We have a motion to second. Seeing no further comment, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously.
We now move to item 7.1, under Supervisor Brandow, adopt resolution in support of the Homelessness, Drug Addiction, and Theft Reduction Act.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to surprise my colleague here to my right and make this really quick. You know, the Homelessness, Drug Addiction, and Theft Reduction Act is just the name that they gave to the ballot measure for reforming Prop 47. And I wanted to bring a resolution before our board to support that campaign to perform Prop 47. Just as a reminder, it reclassifies theft to two or more prior convictions, would make somebody jail-eligible. It would add laws to address the smash-and-grab thefts that are happening all over my district and throughout the state of California, and it would add fentanyl to the list of hard drugs resulting in felony prison time, and it would also provide addiction and mental health services for treatment-mandated felony charges. So it does a lot of good things to address the shortcomings of Prop 47, which was passed like a decade ago. We've had great leadership from Sheriff John Zanoni, who's here today, and also, of course, District Attorney Lisa Smith-Gamp, who could not be here, but I'm prepared to make a motion to, for resolution in support of this act. And so, but I would love to hear from the public, and I would like Sheriff Zanoni, if he has a minute, to say a word.
We'll hear from the sheriff and then open it up to the public.
Supervisor Magsick, Chairman, and the members of the board, and Supervisor Brandow, Prop 47 was something that came along years ago, and it really was not what it was intended. It was labeled like a Safe Streets and Schools Community Act, and it really didn't have a lot to do with safe streets and schools. And as Supervisor Brandow stated, we see a lot of smash-and-grab burglaries, thefts. I don't call them robberies because robbery, you actually have to have force or fear, and usually these individuals just walk right out of our stores, our supermarkets, Walmarts, Targets, and everywhere else with stolen property. We've got to make some changes. I believe when it comes to homelessness, we have a lot of drug addiction, we have theft, we have a lot of issues. We have to fix these things in our community. We can no longer tolerate this retail theft at the rate that it's at, and to have to steal something worth $950 to be classified a felony has become problematic, not just for retailers and law enforcement, and also for people in our community. When you look at it, individuals walk out of stores, and a lot of these individuals, they know what they're stealing, they know what the law is, and they know that there are no consequences for their actions. They know that in the past, many retailers don't even try to stop them, don't even try to intervene because of other issues related to it, and the fact that the criminal justice system will rarely hold them accountable when they steal less than $950 has caused an epidemic of theft across our county, across our communities, and across our state. And when we look at fentanyl and dangerous drugs, and which fentanyl is one of the most dangerous drugs out there, for us as the Sheriff's Office, it becomes more advantageous for us to prosecute that crime federally with our partners at the U.S. Attorney's Office, because our lawmakers in Sacramento and individuals that are part of the government in Sacramento have failed to take that as a priority and do not want to have stiff penalties and punishments for possession of drugs like fentanyl, and they seem to look the other way. This law will help change that, will help those who are victimized by our drug dealers, by our fentanyl dealers, it will help them, and will also make sure that individuals that are out there committing these crimes, either distributing, dealing, or transporting fentanyl in large quantities, will be held accountable and will serve time in prison and not be out in our streets to push this poison amongst the youth of our community. Thank you.
I'm going to open it up to the public. Anyone in the public wishing to comment on this item?
Hi, my name is Sue Hammond. My friend works for Save Mart, and I just want to address for what the sheriff said. They're told they cannot even go after somebody that's stealing, and people walk out with carts of food, and they're just, their hands are tied. So please take this law into consideration, and please pass it. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Josefa. I'm a resident of District 3, and I'm here to speak against this. A member of Public Works earlier mentioned the need to invest in infrastructure and that county residents are living without sidewalks. Homeless rates are increasing, and individuals aren't able to access shelters. We just heard 23 women may lose their access to shelter. It's been stated over and over that we need to invest in resources for the housing insecure and invest in rehabilitation services. At a moment when Fresno residents are at risk of eviction, nearly 50% of the county residents are renters, struggling to afford rent and the rising cost of living, I ask that the board prioritize meeting working-class residents' needs and not support the state in misusing our tax dollars to incarcerate residents. This ballot measure would cost an additional $26 billion in prison funding, $10 billion more on our jails, and $13 billion in court costs. And like the sheriff mentioned, this advertising campaign has been very misleading and has been funded by Target, Home Depot, and Walmart. This is not in the interest of our residents. This is not in the interest of the working class. This is not in the interest of our poor residents here in the county of Fresno. So I ask that you invest in supporting residents and not corporations. Thank you.
Luis Ojeda, again here with the ACLU, want to reiterate some of the points that my colleague here made. Earlier, there was a long conversation around what's going on with our unhoused community here in Fresno, and there were some comments made about concerns about government spending beyond its means and also about the importance of living within our means. But as my colleague stated, this is going to lead to $26 billion more in prison spending, $10 billion more in jails, $13 billion more in court costs. So this is simply a mass incarceration ballot initiative is what it is. This provides no new funding for drug treatment or homeless prevention, so again, I'm not sure why that is in the ballot measure because it doesn't actually address any concerns that our unhoused community has, and is not going to do anything to address those concerns. Additionally, this is going to take $750 million away from our state's most successful drug treatment and homeless prevention programs, so these are programs that are actually doing something to address those concerns, also taking away $300 million from services for survivors of crime. So again, just want to reiterate that this mass incarceration ballot initiative is not something that we should be supporting. This board should focus on more important matters at hand in terms of what our community actually needs at the local level, and this simply is not it. This simply is going to add billions and billions of dollars that are going to be unfunded. And so again, this ballot measure provides no new funding for drug treatment or homeless prevention, regardless of what you may hear today.
Good morning, my name is Torivo Mondragon. I'm the president to the Fresno County Deputy Probationals Officers Association. I'm actually, want to make a comment on this, actually in support of it, we supported it as a membership. I feel that as a father, it's my duty to teach my son right and wrong, and when he sees a person running outside a store with all the property that he just stole, and me as a parent have to explain that, no, Papa, we still have to go pay for our stuff. That's where we come to. I was, I was part of that generation that supported Prop 47 because of base how it was sold. However, it didn't result in what it should have been. Me working with people that have addictions firsthand can see that a lot of them don't take their treatment seriously because it's a misdemeanor. A lot of people continue to steal with no repercussion of what's going on. I'm just want to say that on my personal note, that I feel that as a father, I need to teach my son what's right and what's wrong, and by us pushing for this or to support it, would it fix it, the problem 100%? No, just like everything in life, nothing is 100%. Everything has to come at a cost, and all of us have to learn from it, and then hopefully make corrections instead of us waiting years and years and years for it to actually correct this off, and it never did. So again, part of the, on behalf of the Deputy Probations Officers Association, I support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Torivo. With that, I'm going to close the public portion, bring it back to the board. It's time for motions.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution in support of the Homelessness, Drug Addiction, and Theft Reduction Act.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any further comments? All right, seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? And it carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, we now take up, excuse me, we take up item eight and nine as they are related to each other. If your board wishes to make one motion for both agendas, they may do so as long as it's clear that it is for eight and nine. I will read items eight and nine into the record. Under Chairman Magsick, Sheriff Coroner, Public Administrator, and District Attorney, conduct first hearing to amend the Fresno County Ordinance Code Title 8 to amend Chapter 8.22 Illegal Dumping Ordinance. Way reading of the ordinance in its entirety and set the second hearing for June 4, 2024. Designate County Council of Prairie Fair an adequate summary of the proposed ordinance and direct the clerk of the board to post and publish the required summary in accordance with government code section 25124B1. Item nine is conduct first hearing to amend the Fresno County Ordinance Title 11 to add Chapter 11.46 Seizure and Impound of Nuisant Vehicles. Way reading of the ordinance in its entirety and set the second hearing for June 4, 2024. Designate County Council of Prairie Fair an adequate summary of the proposed ordinance and direct clerk of the board to post and publish the required summary in accordance with government code section 25124B1.
Excellent. Both items have been read into the record. Staff, the floor is yours.
Good afternoon, good morning, Chairman, members of the board. The first ordinance before you, it amends Chapter 8.22 of the Ordinance Code. It will make a violation of illegal dumping a misdemeanor. As a misdemeanor, it will allow the county to impose a greater administrative penalty. It also establishes a new category of illegal dumping, major violations for serious violations, and increases the administrative penalty for that even further to $3,000 per violation. The goal of this ordinance is to impose the financial responsibility of illegal dumping on those that engaged in that illegal act. That's my presentation on 8.22. If there's any questions, I'm available to answer those.
Thank you for the presentation, and I know over the course of the last few years, this board has allocated millions of dollars for cleanup, and I think just last year alone, there was close to $1 million throughout Fresno County of cleanup that was necessary, and I think illegal dumping has increased since COVID. I don't know why that is, but the goal today is to try to put more teeth in our ordinances here, so individuals who might be thinking about dumping will think twice. And two, to also provide resources to residents, just showing them that we do have the ability to take a lot of this debris to our landfill and also recycle oil or other items at different facilities here in the county. So it's both an opportunity to educate the public, but also let individuals know that if they are caught committing crimes-- but also let individuals know that if they are caught committing crimes, the penalty is, is going to sting them pretty good. Anyone else have any questions or comments for staff?
Yeah, I'd like to ask clarification. I think the public might need to hear this as well. So if somebody now in the future dumps a couch, a refrigerator, and a washer, those three big items, right, take a lot of personnel to remove all that stuff, what would be the fine that they would have to?
So in that scenario, Supervisor Brando, each incident of dumping those items you listed would be a separate major violation. So you'd have $3,000 for the refrigerator, $3,000 for the couch, $3,000 for the mattress, if I got correct. So that would be a total of $9,000 for that one instant of illegal dumping, given the separate major violations.
Fantastic, that's real teeth. And I would like to applaud Supervisor Magsig for doing this policy work. And I know that, well, actually, all five of the supervisors face this, but some of our rural supervisors face it much more dramatically, so. Thank you.
Please, Sal.
Quick question. What about the, just trash? In, in the county islands that, that I represent, quite a few of them have alleys. And therefore, folks will go over there and I just dump a lot of trash and leave. What's the, the citation for that, the cost?
So under the proposed recommended ordinance, we have three levels of violations, infractions being, you know, the one-off, the paper cup, the, the magazine, that small item of trash that someone throws out. Anything above that would be illegal dumping. So if you have someone throwing out a bag of trash, that would be illegal dumping. And under the recommended ordinance, that would now be $1,000 if it doesn't rise to the level of a major violation. If you have a significant quantity of trash, three cubic yards, that would qualify as a major violation. So if you have a large dump site in that alleyway, that could become a major violation. And the ordinance also establishes a mechanism to link the origin of that waste, if we have identifying information in the waste pile, if we have items of mail. So we can not only go after the dumper, we could potentially go after an individual who allowed someone to illegally dump on their behalf.
Yeah, when I served on the city council, and I think Steve's familiar with this, having served there as well, that's pretty much what we did when there was illegal dumping of trash in the alley. The, the employees would go through the trash to find receipts or, or payments that they made, and that's how they were able to track down the individual.
Any other comments, Supervisor? Let's talk a little bit about the County Ordinance Code Title XI to add Chapter 11.46 Seizure and Impound of Nuisance Vehicles.
Yes, Chairman, and I apologize if I forgot to introduce myself. Senior Deputy County Council Kyle Roberson. So as the chairman introduced, this ordinance will add Chapter 11.46. This will enable county enforcing agencies to seize vehicles used for illegal dumping and other specified public offenses, prostitution being the main one. When there is, when an individual who owns or operates that vehicle has a prior conviction of that same public offense. So in our arena, when we're talking about illegal dumping, if someone's been convicted of commercial quantity of legal dumping, which is that very large cubic feet of dumping, that would provide authorization for the sheriff's office or other enforcement agencies to impound that car, that vehicle for up to 30 days.
Excellent, excellent. So we've pretty much covered item eight and nine. Any questions about item nine at all? All right, thank you, well done, Kyle. Anyone in the public wishing to comment on this item, please step forward at this time.
Yeah, in my neighborhood, the people that are doing all the dumping are the homeless people. How are you going to address that matter? You guys always get the trash cans and going through them and leaving trash all over the neighborhood. How would you address that matter? That's what went through, doing this in my neighborhood, all the time.
I want to say something else. Hi, I just wanted to say about this stuff that we need to do a lot of cleaning up here for California because we're having a lot of issues with, they're burning banded places, and they're trashing the alleys. And hopefully, our community gets more better than what it is right now. Because reality, you know, there's a lot of things going on everywhere. So hopefully, we make our community, you know, better. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to close the public portion and bring item eight and nine. And I would ask for us to take one motion for item eight and nine. I'll bring it back to the board. And since my office has been working on this with the sheriff's office, with the, also county council, as well as the district attorney's office, I want to say thank you to all of them. Kyle actually has a number of projects that he's always working on. This was one that's been occupying his time for about four months. As we dug into this, it became convoluted a little bit, how, what the state would allow and what kind of ordinances we needed to, to create to make sure that they were fully enforceable and not creating something that we couldn't actually apply out on the streets. So really appreciate your efforts with the sheriff's office and the DA.
We've been kind of working, wanting this for a long time. Did you use like a bull prodded or something to get them to move on this, or what?
Well, I, just because of the focus, so much of the focus by us on spending lots of dollars, I wanted to get this moving quickly, so here we are today. So with that, I'll make a motion for staff's recommendation for items eight and nine.
Second.
We'll take Sal as the second. We've got a motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposition? It carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.
We now move to item number 10. Board of Supervisors Committee reports and comments.
We will start with Supervisor Pacheco. Supervisor Quintero?
Yes, just wanted to give a shout out to a club in the Fresno County area. It's been, they had a centennial celebration on Sunday for their club. 100 years old, it's called the Sanger Tigers. And so they, they've been around quite a number of years. They're probably in their third generation now. And I've been an honorary Tiger for quite a while. I changed my name to Sal Quintarian when I attend their, their events. But anyway, it's, it's just started out as a group of guys in 1924 that were of Armenian descent and were unable to join clubs like the Elks and the Lions and that type of thing. So they decided to name themselves the Tigers and just, just enjoy life and help out in the community the best they could, and they're still going strong. One of the members that attended just recently turned 97. So anyway, just wanted to give them a shout out, tell them congratulations. They're looking forward to for another 100 years. Thank you.
Supervisor Mendez?
Yeah, we did a, in consent, a letter of recognition for the Riverdale Portuguese Celebration, 100 years. And, you know, I just want to thank the board for signing that letter of recognition. And I don't know how, how old Kermin says. Yeah, it's probably a little older, yeah.
All right, thank you. All right, and nothing from Supervisor Brando. And I just have two quick items. Tomorrow, there'll be a groundbreaking for a fire station off of Millerton Road that Cal Fire is going to be hosting around 11 o'clock. And then also, there's going to be a groundbreaking at the Area 2 substation for a memorial for officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty. And so just wanted to state that for the record.
We now move to item number 11, board appointments.
Supervisor Brando, do you have any appointments? Supervisor Mendez? Looks like we don't have any appointments today.
We now move to item number 12, public presentations. This portion of the meeting is reserved. Persons desiring to address the board on any matter not on this agenda.
So is there anyone in the public wishing to comment on any item not on the agenda? And I want to remind the public, there is an IHSS item for closed session. And when we get to the closed session portion, there'll be an opportunity to, to comment there. So anyone wishing to comment on items not listed on the agenda?
Good afternoon, well, good morning, Board Supervisors, Chairman Magsig, and staff. My name is Kyle Savage. I am the new field representative for Madera in Fresno County for Congressman John Duarte for the 13th District of California for the House Representatives. Going forward, as we all know, last week was National Police Week, and May 15th was National Peace Officers Memorial Day. And last week, Congressman Duarte is proud to have voted for the Bipartisan Improving Law Enforcement Officer Safety and Wellness Through Data Act. There has been a sharp rise in anti-police rhetoric and a corresponding rise in violence, acts against law enforcement officers. In 2023, 378 officers were shot in the line of duty. Throughout the year, there were also 115 ambush-style attacks on law enforcement. It is vital that we accurate data regarding violent attacks, including ambushes on police officers. Additionally, police often suffer assaults at other violent officers that go unrecorded. Anti-police rhetoric and violence negatively impacts officers' mental health and wellness. The Bipartisan Improving Law Enforcement Officer Safety and Wellness Through Data Act would require the Attorney General to develop reports relating to violent attacks against law enforcement officers and present these reports to judiciary committees in the House and the Senate. These reports would include critical data on the number of offenders who target law enforcement due to anti-police sentiment, incorporate an analysis of how federal, state, and local police agencies respond to these attacks, and how well they prepare their officers to prevent attacks and to respond to them. Other essential data points would include an assessment of the effectiveness and limitations of the Federal Bulletproof Vests Partnership, and an examination of gaps in current data reporting as part of a study of legislative tools that may help in deterring ambush attacks. The Act would also better identify how frequent and severe attacks impact officers' mental health and study the types of mental health services currently available and identify potential new services for our officers. Congressman Duarte recently signed onto a letter to Joseph Goffman, Assistant Administrator of the U.S. EPA regarding California's request for authorization under Section 209E of the Clean Air Act for its in-use locomotive regulation. The regulation attempts to reduce emissions from the rail sector by pervading older locomotives from operating in the state of California. Starting in 2030, locomotives operating in California must be less than 23 years old based on the original manufacturer date. In addition, starting in 2030 for locomotives operating within railway roads and rail yards, and 2035 for line haul locomotives. Any new locomotive operating in California must operate in a zero admissions configuration. Presently, there are no commercially available freight locomotives that could comply with the ZE requirements of the regulation. This calls into question the technological festivities or feasibility of the regulation. No worries, thank you guys very much for your time.
Hello again, my name is Torrico Mondragon from Fresno County Deputy Probation Officer Association. Sorry, it's the first time I address the council. So I am here to support our Unit 2 membership, which was the JCOs back in April 20, April 23rd of this year, who received the increase to help with their retention issues that they're having at the JGC. As you guys probably know, the Deputy Probation Officer Series or Unit 11 has also been working at the Juvenile Hall right now due to staffing issues that was presented as an emergency. I've come across a lot of issues right now with working at the Juvenile Hall and a big portion is that, that the emergency staffing that was said is actually not really a staffing issue because there's actually enough adequate staff working those halls without probation officers having to work there. Additionally, with the, with support of their increase, we have now have a compaction issue with our salaries. I've brought it up with county HR and just so we can try to fix that. I'm here more just to make, make all you all aware to, so when they come and talk to you guys, you guys know why is it that we're asking. We are in contract right now, we're not out of contract. Our contract's not up until next year. As of right now, we are 3.2% below a JCO. All of our DPOs are college graduates, we have degrees, and we're still making, we're ranked 10th in the state as the largest county in the state. But we're paid less than all the four surrounding counties, SPOs. So I would like your guys' support. So when we bring it up to the county, that you guys can support our, trying to fix our compaction issue and make us more competitive so we can keep good officers here instead of having them leave to other counties or to the state. Obviously, when money's invested in an employee, it's invested through the background check and everything that's involved in making a person a peace officer, which I am a peace officer. That investment, with time, goes to other places because of our competitiveness with other counties. We have no competitiveness. We're very beneath, I know they, when we spoke with county HR, they kind of wrecked us and we, we want to present something to the board that's gold, silver, and bronze. We're led. Deputy probation officers are led. What we, what we actually are with our salaries. Hence, the reason why I'm here talking, I was actually here for another agenda item that's no longer on the agenda anymore. But other than that, that's it, thank you very much for your time. Have a great day.
Good morning, my name is Rosio Madrigan, and I'm a resident of Fresno County. I, first of all, would like to congratulate all of the people behind me in purple shirts and their families that are here. Cannot go unnoticed that they are still here for a cry for you to listen to the situation for the very fragile people and children that they take care of. So I ask you to do your due diligence and try to hear their plea. There's not hundreds of them here in the room, but they do represent and care for many people that affect dozens of people in their family. And I appreciate them, and I hope you take the time to do the due diligence as we do. I just heard this past week, the city council was able to manage a very large city budget. So when there's a will, there is a way. I am here because I read about the neonate, as it is the common name, for a pesticide that has an emergency order to protect tomatoes against a leaf frog, sorry, I forget the name, leaf hopper, correct. I'm very concerned, we have 31 more days before this emergency order is renewed or is up for renewal by you. While I understand that, yes, you, one of you nominated or your board nominated Ms. Kriegen as the person to be in charge of that for this county, I ask you for us not to be like little ducklings and just approve it just because. There's a lot to be looked at, it is a pesticide. And yes, we want to save tomatoes, but tomatoes like our cars have insurance. The harm of this pesticide without due diligence is not okay. We already have over 250 million tons of pesticides that affect our people that are sick, that are elderly, and that have asthma. So you have 31 days, please do your due diligence. I know we have lots of teachers, public health officials, scientists. Do your, do your work, get some other options, it should not be the only option. Thank you.
All right, we're going to close the public portion. What's the next item?
At this time, you can take up closed session comments for items 14 through 17.
What about the, we're going to change locations, or do we want to?
You'll take public comment first and then change locations.
Got it, all right. So any public comment then on items that are on closed session?
Caregivers asking for fair wages are mostly senior citizens. To become a caregiver, you must pass a background check and be a good citizen of the United States. That's all the people behind me, if you look at them. They're not party animals, they're not out there wasting money on stupid shit. They're all good people, they need more money. Caregivers provide a service for 22,000 patients that qualify for medical assistance. So they're helping out all these people in, in our community. You know, and what do we do? We treat them like, like nothing, you know, like give them barely enough to survive on. But we're putting a lot of money into fighting crime and stuff like that. They're not, they're not busting into laws, they're not breaking any laws, they're good people. They just want fair wages. Does $16 an hour sound like fair wages? And there are times of what everything costs now? I don't think so. Gas is expensive, food's expensive, everything, electricity's going up. You know, we raise our taxes another, another cent, you know? Why can't you help these people? You know, most of them can't do anything else but that. And you're providing a service for you guys, and you guys are treating them bad. But people that break the law, you throw money to them to have them incarcerated, throwing them to jail and all this other stuff. You got money for that, you don't have money to help these people right here. I'm, 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 I do construction work, I'm only doing this part-time so I can do something else. But what I see here, these people these people can't do anything else. You know, they're stuck in, in, in this situation, helping out people because that's all they can do. So why can't you help them? Why can't you give them at least twenty dollars an hour? You think sixteen dollars, sixteen-ten is good enough pay for them? Do you really think so? You guys are going to need help when you get older too. You're going to need help, you know, as your years go on, you're going to need assistance too. Don't you want people, good people helping you?
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm here to represent IHSS and providers and recipients. I appreciate the opportunity to share with you our concerns and requests regarding the IHSS program. We are still in need of additional changes that will strengthen our ability to provide the best continuity of care. The public, as well as government officials, should be aware of our full range of services. Otherwise, how can they know the depth and breadth of the program, which develops an appreciation for the need that is met and helps us to justify the appropriation of funds? In the interest of transparency and full disclosure, we hope you can, we hope we can inspire you and others to use our full range of services when describing and educating about the program or making decisions related to IHSS providers and recipients. Each level of service, from assistance with activities of daily living to paramedical or protective supervision, requires its own level of knowledge, responsibility, and skill. All cases carry considerable responsibility in order to ensure our clients' well-being. The IHSS program is important and needs all community, and needed in all communities, and saves county, state, and federal money in the long run. Maintaining providers on the job and preventing high turnover rates requires our services to be valued based on our full range of services. We need our services to be valued, just as a firefighter or doctor are valued for what they prevent. So should our services be valued. Regarding personal care, what we do with respiration prevents possible depression, high blood pressure, heart attacks, strokes, type-two diabetes, in relation to CPAP machines, and oxygen, cognitive difficulties and dementia. In relation to feeding, it prevents malnutrition and obesity. Bell and bladder care prevents skin rashes and sores, soiling of furniture and carpets. Bathing prevents body odor and skin breakdown. Oral hygiene prevents gum disease, tooth decay and removal. Brushing hair and shaving promotes self-esteem and prevents depression. Repositioning and rubbing skin prevents skin breakdown and pressure sores. Getting dressed promotes self-esteem and gets them ready for visitors or doctor appointments. Walking and transfers promotes a sense of freedom in getting to another room, prevents falls and broken bones. Care of assistants with prosthetic devices such as dentures, eyeglasses, hearing aids, and artificial limbs promotes independence and prevents malnutrition, choking, accidents of all kinds, isolation, communication problems, just to name a few. Medication reminders help people on their meds to follow doctor's care. Thank you.
Good morning.
Mi nombre es Elvira De La Cruz.
My name is Elvira De La Cruz.
Y como ven, toda mi familia.
And as you see, my whole family were representing this color, SEIU color.
Yo la verdad, a veces estoy sentada y veo que están enfadados, cansados, quizás de escucharnos y de ver.
You look upset. You look tired, that you're tired of seeing us all the time. The only thing I want you to say, I want to say is that this month, two people die under my care of cancer. It's very difficult to have their hand in our hand at the last minute, that they have put their trust in us.
Para bañarlos.
To, to bathe them, to clean them.
Y hacer miles de cosas.
And a thousand things that they, that we can do. Even psychologists, without having a diploma. The only thing I want to tell you is that this room here is a bridge to get to you. We are asking what's just.
Lo que necesitamos.
What we need.
Yo tengo dos personas cuidando tres horas.
I have two people that I'm taking care of right now. Three hours a day. I'm looking for somebody else to take care of because what I earn right now is not enough, not even to pay my house payment.
Mucho menos lo más necesario.
Not even to, to get my, my main things, my living stuff.
Pido un sueldo honesto.
I want an honest salary.
Y salario respetable.
In a salary, a respectful salary, a fair salary.
Para que nos ayuden y nos apoyen a tener una vida un poquito mejor.
So you can help us to get a decent life, a little better life, a little easier life.
Si nosotros no hacemos ese trabajo, ¿quién lo va a hacer?
If we don't do this job that we're doing, who's going to do it?
Todos están yendo a restaurantes.
Everybody is going to work at restaurants because they can get twenty dollars an hour. They do deserve it, but we also do deserve. So please, listen to us. We're not going to get tired of being here every day, all the time, until you can provide us what we need. Thank you very much for listening, for listening.
Good afternoon. My name is Sol Caballero. And first of all, I'd like to say thank you for putting the agendas in different languages. I just would like to, first of all, ask if we can put the agendas so we can be, they can be downloaded from where the English ones are, so that we can re, preview them. And, and, yeah, thank you. And, but thank you so much, Mr. Pacheco, and everyone else who was involved in that. I'm also, she says she's not tired. I am. I am. I take care of my son who has autism. He's thirty-two years old. And then, which is even more difficult is I take care of my daughter, who's a provider. She's a provider, and she helps me with my son, but she has this second time. And I don't want to bore you, because I already told you that story. She has a second time of, of having surgery for her brain tumor. She really needed Kaiser. She was two years on the Kaiser, on the list. You, only you can eliminate that. Although we did the negotiation, we planned that, we calculated what it would take to not have a, a waiting list. Well, Kaiser prices went up and that changed, so it's not valid anymore. So we can't negotiate that on our part towards you, but you can. It, I'm, we shouldn't be here. We should be home, taking care of our left ones or the ones we take care of. And I asked Maria, when are we going to go to the next step? When are we going to go to this next step? We need this contract done. Today, I'm announcing, I'm, I started my hunger strike yesterday, and I am not going to stop till you guys come to an agreement. I know you don't meet till another month. And I did the hunger strike eleven days. I don't know if I can do eleven days, but I'm going to go one day at a time, and I'm going to ask the support of my union because we deserve this to be over. We, I am passionate that we do not want to give up our healthcare. I don't care what you promise for Medi-Cal, and you guys also attend to Medi-Cal. It's not right. It's not consistent. It's not valid enough. I am so against being on Medi-Cal because there's a share of cost, and it becomes ridiculously high. So today is day two of my hunger strike. I am passionate that we get this contract done. Thank you.
Just for the record, we have one more speaker, and then you'll be reaching your fifteen-minute limit.
Hi, my name is Sue Hammond, and I have been here on many, many occasions. And the last time I was here was the beginning of April when we came. And I was very upset and disappointed because we have been here so many times. All we're asking is that you give us our, you know, that you approve the twenty dollars an hour and keep our healthcare intact. I won't bring up names. I was told not to. But one of the county supervisors, after I spoke about our healthcare, started questioning our union and questioning the fact that our union's not letting us know that there are other options out there for healthcare. Let me tell you, when I moved here five years ago, moved back to the Valley, I was raised and born here. And we had been away for a few years. And when I came back, I had to be on Cal, covered California. At sixty-something years old, I was paying three hundred and twenty-five dollars a month. Now, I'm talking to other people, other caregivers. They have told me that it's going way up, probably five hundred dollars a month, up to nine hundred. I talked to somebody who's paying that much. We can't afford that. We cannot do that. That is not okay. Why aren't we getting our contract provided? I don't get it. I appreciate each and every one of you. I know you have hard jobs, but you guys are covered. What about us? You know, what about asking for the twenty dollars an hour if they can give that to fast food workers? We deserve that just as well. We take care of people, human beings. We have to give them medications. We have to take care of them. And just like Mary had said earlier, all the things that we do for these people, we keep them in their homes. We keep their dignity. I just don't understand why it's such a big deal. I know it's in the budget. And I am asking you guys to please fulfill our contract and have it done by the end of the month. I appreciate each and every one of you, and God bless.
All right. We thank you all for being here today. At this time, we're going to close the public portion. And County Council, is there anything that we need to announce out before we move to the next venue?
No, Mr. Chairman. We are not anticipating any announcements out of closed session. So following the board's press conference and going to closed session, we can adjourn following closed session.
All right. Then we will now convene over to the next room.
Item number thirteen, under the administrative office. You will now move over and join in on the press conference with the Fresno County Sheriff and District Attorney on the topic of illegal dumping.